Okay, Mayor, we're ready to go.
Very good. Okay, I will call to order the Arvada City Council Workshop for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Kristen Rush, if you'll do a roll call.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Mormon?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Take a motion. Yes, Mr. Pfeiffer?
Move to excuse Councilmember Smith from tonight's workshop.
Very good. Mr. Jones, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Marriott?
Yes.
Mormon?
Yes.
Ms. Simpson?
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes as well. She is excused on a six to nothing vote. She is actually on her honeymoon out of the country, so good justification. We hope she's having a great time. We have two workshops tonight. Before we start with our workshops, a couple of things I wanted to bring up. This is our last meeting of the year, so we won't have another opportunity for council reports. I did want to note the passing of David Palm, who has been very active in our community for a number of years. You either agreed with Mr. Palm or you didn't disagree, or you did disagree with Mr. Palm. But he certainly cared about our community, was very vocal in terms of of his positions, but I think it always came from a position of caring deeply about the community. We are sorry for his passing. He was obviously someone who was engaged and cared deeply, and we were sorry for his passing. Secondly, I have recorded a message to the citizens of Arvada, sort of a year end, so watch for that. I won't elaborate on it at this point, but certainly I know for the entire city council, we wish all of our citizens the very best as we come upon the holiday season and for those who of the Jewish faith who just completed Hanukkah for this year. And wishing everyone a very, very safe and healthy twenty twenty-two. And let's hope the heck that we can put twenty twenty-one in the rearview mirror just as quickly as possible. With that, Mr. Devon, we can move on to our workshops.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are going to, the first workshop is the Land Development Code update, and we'll have Director of Community and Economic Development, Ryan Stachowski, introduce this item.
Thanks, Mark, and thanks, Mayor, and members of city council. Appreciate your time on this important matter tonight. As you recall, we first updated the land development code in May of twenty twenty. There are a lot of significant changes to the land development code, and it was a whole rewrite. So now we've lived with the code for sixteen, eighteen months, and as you go through, anytime you have an ordinance of that size and that magnitude, you're going to learn a few things along the way. And so back on September thirteenth, I believe it was, the the city team brought forth a number of of items that we noticed in the land development code that just need to be tweaked a little bit, definitions that need to be clarified, and various aspects. For the large part of city council, for the most part, city council agreed with all of the changes that were being proposed by the the city team at that time, and so we were able to knock several of the items off the list. However, there are about four outstanding items that council wanted to have continued conversations on. And so those are the items that we're going to discuss tonight. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Rob Smetana to walk us through those items. But I want to let you know that both myself and Emily Grog are here from the Development Review CED team to answer specific questions. And then, of course, you know, Mark and Rachel are here to answer other policy questions as well. But for now, I'll turn it over to Rob Smetana. Rob, you're on mute. Eighteen months in.
There we go. I thought I had hit it, and it didn't work. Okay, so here we are. Thanks, Ryan, for the introduction. And as Ryan mentioned, we are here to talk about just a handful of topics at this point. So if you want to jump two slides, please. So the first one, there was some discussion at our September thirteenth meeting about the notification distance and whether the five hundred feet was appropriate, or if we should look at increasing the the radius for notification to a greater distance. We did do some research around the region, and there were a number of communities that went anywhere from fifteen hundred feet to basically a quarter of a mile, twelve hundred and fifty feet for notification distances. But the most common distances were somewhere between five hundred and a thousand feet. So we did look at making that modification to a thousand feet. And I think that's an appropriate balance between the the various jurisdictions that we've seen. And that would be notifications again for administrative projects as well as for public hearing cases where a notice is sent out about the public hearings. For the administrative cases, it would be the notice of administrative decision where that the radius would apply to. So that's kind of what we looked at. There are some implications to increasing it. Just as an example, the fence case that you did see last week, the minor modification, we did look at the notification and what that would mean for a small case like that. And they had to mail for the five hundred foot mailing notice, they mailed to seventy-five adjacent property owners. With the thousand foot distance, that would increase in that instance to about two hundred and sixty properties that would get notification. And that's because there were a lot of smaller lots around that particular case. So that just gives you an example of what the difference is for that notification change. But we do feel comfortable with the thousand feet.
Rob, can I stop you right there and ask a quick question?
Yep.
So in a big project that covers a lot of ground, you know, a thirty acre site or something, is that proposed thousand feet from the borders or the boundaries of the development site, or is it a thousand feet from a pin in the center of the site?
No, it is from the boundaries of the site. So that would be, you know, if you have thirty acres, it's looking at that entire thirty acres and going around a thousand feet from the edges of that thirty acre site.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mormon, did you have a question?
I did. Thank you, Mayor. My question is about, do we have a system already in place for any resident, regardless of how far they live near a proposal, to just get on like an automated email list to, you know, be notified of any any rezoning or development proposal changes?
We do, we do unofficially, you know, we have the three official ways to provide notification. But unofficially, we do post on the city's website, the calendar. We send to any neighborhoods that we have emails for that are in the vicinity. We do a number of social media notifications as well. So we do try to go a lot broader than just the mailed notice.
Yeah, I don't see any other questions at this point. Are you looking for, you want us to give you a thumbs up, thumbs down on each of these as we do it, or just towards the end?
That would probably be helpful, just so we know if we're going in the right direction.
Hey. Everybody feel like we're in the right direction? I think, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor, I'll make my my comments. These are tricky because, you know, I'd hate for somebody who's, instead of going to the Board of Adjustment, they're ending up at city council for a major modification for a fence project, to have to go and mail out notification to two or three or four hundred people, just so they can build a bigger fence across their front yard. So I I think that the the ability for the director to reduce a requirement of limited impact, I think it's a key component of this. But I also think, on the other hand, if you flip that to the other hand, the biggest projects that we do, particularly if they're in certain places, previously, a five hundred foot notification might not notify almost anybody, almost nobody. And a thousand feet might, it's certainly better. I think it's on the right track. But for a really large case, a big impactful case, I wonder if, is there, can we also have a oh, a similar statement that the director can reduce the notice requirement for projects of limited impact? But can we also have the Community Development Director have the 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 ability to increase it for projects of bigger impact? And I think about, you know, if we think about the Amazon one, nobody in Wyndham Park or Wildflower Ponds would have been notified, even with a thousand foot notification requirement. But it's certainly, at least they felt like that impacted them. And it seems like there should be some way of having some notification in a in a case like that. I think mostly, if I look back at like the redevelopment of the K-Mark site, you know, a thousand foot radius there ought to be perfect, you know, that would be great. I think in most cases, that would be fine. But I always feel really bad if there's residents who feel like things are getting hidden from them, or they're not being notified of things. But really, we've never done that. It's just a perception based on what our rules are for notification, and it seems like there, if there's flexibility downward, maybe there can be some flexibility upward as well.
From the team, yes, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, no, I actually was gonna make that same comment as Mr. Marriott. So I just want to put an exclamation point on what Mr. Marriott said. I appreciate that.
Anybody else? My only, my only thought, and I'd like to hear what the team has to say. My only thought is, frankly, on those more controversial, larger projects, trust me, the word is out. So, you know, that I don't know that you need to go to, you know, and I don't know what kind of expense that creates for an applicant. But in reality, for those kinds of larger projects, I don't know that it's the mailing that is as important as just people observing. And recall that the properties are posted, so that that gives some additional notice as you pass by. So from the team, Ms. Pfeiffer?
Yeah, you know, I was sitting there thinking about what Marriott was saying, but, you know, like the Amazon situation, and you think of Wyndham Park, you know, there's a traffic impact with additional trucks on the road. But it kind of goes along the lines of what you're saying, Mayor, you know, they usually know about it one way or the other. Because also, you don't want to create, you know, an engagement of people, like if we were to notify everyone on the truck route within a block of the truck route, then what what is that, what is that potentially could have an impact? I'm just trying to think of what the right formula is, because I don't, I don't think it should be so variable, Marriott. The only, the only issue I have with it is, if you allow that variable to go up and down, then that's up to Ryan to decide who he should notify or not, and not us. So I think there should be like some more fact-based or a little bit more math put to how they determine it. You know, and I don't know what that could be, but I don't, I don't want Ryan to be in the position to say, well, he shorted five hundred feet, and we're all pissed. And and that's not fair to Ryan. Sorry, Ryan, I'm using your name. The director's position, and whoever that may be, you know, I I want to protect them as well from us. We might not all be here, and then we're going to get mad because Amazon came up and he was five hundred feet short on what we thought was right. So we shouldn't really keep the subjectiveness out of it, I think. Try to put some more facts around how he notifies it, a sliding scale, maybe.
But don't you have the same issue on the five, the the smaller projects as well? Because there is some subjectiveness to that as well.
Well, and I think that that you could take the type of request, like if it's a Board of Adjustment request, then should it be a flat, you know, like you said, five hundred? But if it's a development or redevelopment, then that's, I don't know. You know, if it's under an acre or something, then it's only a thousand feet. If it's more than five acres or something, then it's fifteen hundred. I don't, there just needs to be like a scale that is used across reference that we all agree to. And maybe, maybe the team can go back and figure out what would be appropriate to to handle a few of these that pop in. Because you look at the master plan for, let's just say, for Lion Rock or for Condellis, one of these big ones, not that there would be another one, but back then, a thousand feet wouldn't have been nothing.
No.
Nobody would show up, what, ten people would have got an email or, you know, for both developments? So I, I mean, I agree with it, but look at the acreage of it, you know, that one might be a mile radius. But I just, I would encourage that we maybe not be so subjective on the director, on allowing it, or give him some criteria in which he can work under, or she. Just my thought. Don't have to listen to it.
Yeah, we have to listen to it. Whether or not we have to agree with this is another question entirely.
True, fair enough.
Okay. Ryan, do you have anything on this from your perspective?
You know, I appreciate the conversation. I I I agree with Councilmember Pfeiffer in the sense that if we were going to go larger, having some criteria like five acres or whatever makes some sense. Because once you start getting to the discretionary aspect of it, I do see situations of saying, well, it was, you know, I was a thousand one feet away, and I didn't get noticed, and and that did me harm in some way. So having that kind of black and white is something that gives me a little bit more comfort in that I'm not being arbitrary and capricious, which I could be accused of unintentionally based on my initial perception of whether or not something was controversial or not. I'm less concerned about it in terms of the downsizing of things, just because those things are usually fairly obvious and and good examples of something that's a lot more minor. We always have the, well, we're going to do a thousand feet to fall back on, and and I don't have to use the discretion to go down. It's a little bit more of, should you use discretion to go up? And people kind of accusing you of not going up. It's it's not as bad to stay up and and then go down in cases that are clearly minor cases. So I like the idea of using some level of criteria, and and we don't have to decide that tonight. Our team can go back and come up with some formula that that articulates it. But I also say that I also agree with the mayor that when something's controversial, people know about it. And and we do a good job of getting the word out there. This is the formal notice, but we do a lot informally to make sure that people are aware.
Ryan, can I make just a suggestion? And and maybe something your team can look at, I think that's probably the right way to do it, is have the professionals look at it. But I would, I think a sliding scale would be great. In my eyes, if it was twenty acres or bigger, I would expect bigger notification than if it was under twenty acres. And certainly, if it impacted less than two acres, I would expect smaller. And so, you know, for for me, if I were thinking of it, I'd be thinking of anything that that involves a single development of twenty acres or more, that the notification radius might ought to be fifteen hundred feet instead of a thousand feet. And then if it's, because that would only, I don't know how many bigger than twenty acre sites we have, not a lot, obviously, so that wouldn't be used a lot, but anything bigger than twenty acres is pretty impactful, and people ought to really know about it. And so that'd be my suggestion, just as as a throw out there.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anybody else wanting to chime in. So you're going to go back, give some more thought to criteria so that we so we don't have any unwritten rules and so that we're not putting the director in a position of being accused of picking, picking winners and losers. Very good. Okay. Rob, you want to go on?
We'll go take a look at that. The next two, there were kind of two topics here on this next slide that was easier just to put them kind of together. And that is the whole discussion about fleet vehicles, and that did come up during the the Amazon situation where they had a huge parking lot that was designed for their vans. And so we did want to go back and take a look at creating a definition for a fleet vehicle and then limiting the fleet vehicle parking areas. So you can see here the definition, which is basically a motor vehicle, car, van, truck, that's owned or leased by a business or an agency rather than an individual or a family. And we gave some examples of the types of vehicles that would be considered fleet vehicles, just to add some additional clarification to that definition. And then we looked at the limitations so that there would be a limit on fleet size depending on the zoning district in which the the site was located. We also did set kind of a ground floor to kind of capture those smaller mom and pop plumbing companies or electrical companies and said that the the floor, or I guess, yeah, sort of the floor would be the twenty-five vehicles. Anything less than that would be exempt from these regulations in terms of the area of a parking area that a fleet could could occupy. And then we went up from there and said that you calculate your minimum parking requirement, not the minimum that is proposed, but the minimum parking that's allowed by code. And in the the commercial general district, you could have fifty percent of your, of those parking spaces occupied by fleet vehicles. At, in the IL zone, the the light industry zone, that would go up to a hundred percent. And then in the IG, our heaviest zone, that would be, you could have up to two hundred percent of your minimum parking being occupied by fleet vehicles.
So, quick question on that. So you're saying, I'm just, I don't know what the the parking ratios are for each one of those zones off the top of my head. But if if the first one, fifty percent, so if the parking ratio was one hundred spaces, then they could park fifty fleet vehicles in those one hundred spaces?
Correct. So the maximum number of fleet vehicles you could have would be fifty, for fifty parking spaces dedicated to fleet vehicles. Beyond that, you you'd meet your minimum parking requirement, and you could go above your minimum parking requirement. But you could not, you could not say, you could have a situation where they're required to have a minimum of a hundred parking spaces, and they do a hundred and twenty-five. Well, you don't get that extra twelve parking spaces for the fleet vehicles. You're capped at fifty percent of the minimum. So even if you had a hundred and twenty-five spaces for customers, you could still only have fifty spaces for fleet vehicles.
Okay. Thank you.
Simpson?
Thank you, and thank you, Rob, for the presentation this evening. Quick question on the definition of a fleet vehicle. I see, you know, owned or leased by the company, but what about contractors? This is something we're starting to see more and more of, is that people who are contract delivery drivers using their own vehicle, is that going, it's being used as a fleet vehicle, but is it being defined as one? Is it, is it being encompassed in that fifty?
Rob, I can help answer this question.
Sure, go ahead, right.
So the answer is no. Because it's not being parked on site, it's not being maintained on site, it's not being held there overnight until an employee comes and replaces it with their private vehicle in order to go in and park it there overnight. If you think about other scenarios in which you could have a slippery slope of getting into private vehicles that are being used for delivery, for example, as fleet vehicles, you know, Domino's Pizza would now have fleets for their employees that are coming in and delivering pizzas. The DoorDash is in the Uber Eats and those types of things. Because those fleets are not being housed on site, and they're not providing parking on site for those vehicles, they're just being there to pick something up and then leave, it is not part of the definition of fleet.
Okay, perfect. And I understand why that is for parking, although, and I realize it's coming later in the presentation, where we get to with, in terms of total trips, that does concern me a little bit, depending on how many fleets come, vehicles come through there, but we can talk about that later. Thank you, Ryan.
Mormon?
Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I wanted to follow up with that question as well. Why are semi-trucks not included as part of the fleet?
The way, you know, semi-trucks are very similar to a private auto vehicle. They could be part of the operation, but they can also be independent trucking companies that are just bringing product to a site. So it's it's hard to consider them fleets in that type of situation. And generally, though, we don't see a ton of parking associated with semi-trucks. Where we have seen these instances, it's where you get the smaller vehicles, that that's where they're accounting for, kind of the fleet vehicles. With semi-trucks, they're usually just kind of there and then gone. They don't usually park overnight, or if they do, it's there for the overnight, and then they leave in the morning. So it's a slightly different way to look at how the vehicles actually operate coming in and out of the site.
So I guess I'm not clear then on really the definition of a fleet then, because it seems to me if, especially if it sounds like if it's parked overnight, then it's classified as a fleet. But if, and correct me if I'm wrong on that, but if, but if that's the case, then there are going to be instances where there is going to be a semi-truck parked overnight, it seems like to me, then if that's the standard, it should be counted as part of the fleet.
Typically, though, they're they're just there to unload their product and then go on, where a fleet would actually potentially be maintained on the site as well as parked on the site. And you generally, with a truck coming in and out, not having also a private vehicle there, where somebody's getting into their private vehicle and going, it's usually happening while the driver is is in the vicinity of the truck and then leaves after it's loaded or unloaded. So that's why we did make the distinction between the two. We can certainly go back, though, and look at other options for fleet vehicles as well. But the idea was really to talk about those smaller vehicles, which are the ones that really tend to take up a large portion of the site, as we we've seen with these types of warehouse operations.
Jones?
Just to follow up on Mr. Mormon's comment there, the way I guess I was looking at that, or when I read it, typically, a tractor trailer backs into a dock area and for purposes of loading and unloading. And then, to your point, they, maybe they're overnight and then pull away. So how how are we thinking about kind of the open lot storage of a tractor trailer that maybe not hooked? The tractor's gone, but the trailer's sitting there overnight. How are we thinking about that? Is there, to Mr. Mormon's comment, is there any, does that fifty percent, does that calculation count towards those trailers that may be sitting overnight as well?
The way it's written, it does not. It would just apply to the actual, essentially, the the motorized vehicle, not the the trailer.
Pfeiffer, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I was just going to ask a follow up to that, that, so, so if, if a potential user, using the scenario of a hundred spaces, could use fifty of those for fleet vehicles, and twenty-five of those fleet vehicles were simply trailers, and twenty-five percent, or twenty-five percent of, twenty-five of those vehicles were a fleet, a motorized vehicle, are we okay with that, based on this? Do we want these areas for trailer storage as well? So, yeah, I'm just, I'm not asking for the answer now. I'm just asking kind of as a, as a question to be thoughtful around as we're thinking about this definition.
So I I think that the, I think the the distinction here is, once it doesn't have a a motor on it anymore, it becomes in the definition of outside storage. And so then I think that it becomes a different category. It's no longer a fleet vehicle. They're storing, because you could have Conexes or tractor trailers and those types of things, and I've certainly been part of And I've certainly been part of conversations in which people have, um. Uh, tractor trailers that are parked outside there and they just have them full of stuff. And you're not allowed to to, whether it's a Conex or a tractor trailer, um, just store things and have that outside storage. So you're you're getting into a different category and a different definition of what that is. Um, once you start just storing trailers there, trailers need to be in the active use of unloading or loading. Uh, in a in a bay or maybe in a parking space waiting for a bay to be ready. But they're usually in an active part, not a passive part of it unless it's specifically designed for something like that. And that would get more into the bucket of a heavy logistics center rather than a an IL where you'd see more, um, fleet vehicles. So that would be captured in a different way in the zoning.
Thank you.
Bye for.
Uh, well, I think he answered the question. I think for me is, I'm trying to picture, you know, and. Uh, light industrial area that might have tractor trailers all hooked up, taking up that parking. With the, you know, the full motor hooked into the, into the, uh, the trailer part. You know, um, I'm thinking of like, you know, when you go over there by, what is it, Federal or Pecos or somewhere over there where they have a whole bunch of them just lined up. Um, is that an acceptable use in an industrial life? And I don't like, I I think like, just like Mr. Jones said, I'm a little worried. Not that we need an answer here, but we just need to be thoughtful that it can, can it be, is is the requests you're asking or the refinement of this. Open up other uses that we're just not not seeing. Uh, my my fear is, is, yeah, they they put the hundred parking spots and then there's twenty five rigs that are lined up. You know, in those parking spots hooked up, ready to go. And then now we've turned it light industrial into a heavy distribution that are idling. That, and I say idling, not as in the engine, but you know, there's there's vehicles, big vehicles ready to move. Is there some language that says? Or should we think of language that says something to the effect of like what Keen Supers does, uh, the tractor trailer pulls up, drops off the trailer. The tractor part leaves, go gets another truck. It's okay that that's hooked up in the bay or it's in the bay, it's fine, it's being serviced. But when it starts sitting out in the parking lot, that's when the, like you said, storage becomes an issue. Is the tractor hooked to the trailer? Sitting in the parking lot, is that an issue? Uh, can that count as fleet? And I and I think, I almost feel like you kind of should call those fleet because they have logos on the side. They may not be that property owner's fleet. But it's somebody's fleet showing up and staying there. And so we just need to maybe put some thoughts around that. I don't know what the right answer is, but maybe you can craft something that. Prohibits long, uh, uh. You know, parking of of tractor trailers and local tractor trailers that are hooked up. I don't mind the bay part, you know, when they're hooked into the bay, because they're being, they're being worked on usually if they're in a bay. Right? They're being unloaded, loaded, that could take days. When the, when the tractor parts hooked up, I think is the distinguishing factor for me.
Mormon?
And and, uh, a question about how the, uh, percentages for the limitations, the percentages of the parking are calculated. That that's based also off of the the square feet footage of the building itself, correct?
Yes, it's based somewhat off the square footage and somewhat off the use. It's it it's, there's a couple of different ways that we calculate parking. But it's, uh, yeah, it's it's generally based off the square footage of the use that's occupying that space.
So I think what would be helpful for me and then the public to understand the implications of this too, is maybe just have a. A chart that puts it, you know, in those terms of if you have a hundred thousand square foot building. This is how many parking spots, and then this is the percentage of those parking spots. Because I I think it's a little hard to make that connection without knowing, connecting all those dots. Does that make sense?
Sure, uh, yeah, we can definitely do that. And it also, it would depend again on what zone district it's in as well. So the graduating scale of the the zone district as well.
I think what we've got here is a little bit of a cross issue with regard to the semi trailers and fleet vehicles. The the one that comes to mind for me, and I see it all the time, is at the, um. The Walgreens at at, uh, sixty fourth and McIntyre. I mean, there's a trailer out there, and I almost think they've got it out there for advertising purposes. And we all know that Jake Jabs does that with American Furniture. Uh, at his locations where, you know, he's come up against the sign code and says, well, I'm gonna park my. Big, uh, trailer out there on on, uh, Wadsworth and what is it, ninety second or so. As just as an advertising. So, Ryan, I know that's a totally separate issue, but are, do we have ways to address that?
Um, do we have ways of address, yes. Um, so, you know, that. They're not allowed, like. For Walgreens, for example, um, you know, they can't have a tractor trailer out there in perpetuity. I can't remember what the code exactly says, but I think that there's a certain number of hours in which it needs to be moved. Um, or or shown to be moved, um, that that addresses that kind of, um, situation. Um, like the Walgreens situation or the Jake Jabs situation.
Yeah, we do have that. It it it's addressed in our sign code. It basically talks about signage on, uh, motorized vehicles.
Well, I haven't filed any complaints and I don't know if anybody else has. But, uh, it's it sits there. I almost thought it was put there to sort of block people from seeing the sprouts. But that's just my devious mind at work. Okay. Do you feel like you've got enough direction on this one to go back and do some more noodling?
I think so.
Right. Okay, Rob, do we move on to the next one?
All right, yep. So the next one, uh, there's again somewhat interrelated here. Uh, and it has to do with review of projects through the conditional use approval. So that's when the Planning Commission weighs in with a recommendation and council either, uh, approves or denies a conditional use. And there was some question the last time, uh, we met about, um. How how we then tie what you saw at the conditional use level. To an actual site plan that comes with the next step of the process, and that would be an administrative review versus the conditional use being a public hearing review. And what kind of changes are being made or could be made between those two steps? If there's just kind of a carte blanche, yes, we give a conditional use approval for a particular type of use. Particularly, I think it was focused on residential projects. And if you approve a, if you just say you're approving a conditional use for residential on a particular property. Um, how does that then tie to what you saw in terms of of a conceptual plan? At the conditional use level as we move into the site plan level. So we wanted to tighten that up a little bit. And so we're proposing to add language that says. Uh, that if an application, uh, includes the residential use and it was granted a conditional use approval. Then the number of residential units proposed must be within ten percent of the number of units that was presented during the conditional use review. So that gives a little bit of flexibility, uh, to a project. So if they're, you know, looking at the building and they decide they wanna go with more studio units than two bedroom units. That gives them the flexibility on the units to kind of move things around, but that won't really change the footprint of a building. So we we're hoping that that number kind of works to create a a stable footprint. But allows some flexibility of what actually happens with with, yeah, inside of those buildings. And then we're also proposing to, not as part of the code, but just as a condition of conditional use approval. Within the MX zoning districts, saying that the site plan, uh, application. Should be substantially similar to the conceptual plan as part of the conditional use of, uh, review. So again, that ties down a little bit of the site design. But still allows the flexibility in the number of units within a particular building. We would also then, you know, still be reviewing it for parking requirements, uh, all the other requirements that would be associated with that. As that mom number moves up and down that small increment. But it still allows a pretty good idea of what a project's gonna look like moving forward from that conditional use approval.
I for your first.
So. I don't know, I kind of struggle with any flexibility like that, because if you're in front of council and you're selling me a bag of goods, I should probably assume. Now, you said ideally the site shouldn't really change as much, but I think. I worry about what what happens of ten percent. Good example, talking just to Ryan tonight, could be, you know, seven hundred and fifty units in a parcel. You're talking about seventy five additional units that may impact other things. Um, that is administratively done, and me as a council member don't recall that we allowed an additional seventy five units to go into this area. Cause we approved a number, a vision, a plan. That now also has flexibility beyond what we approved. I could understand going below. I don't, I can't understand going up. So if we approve a threshold, just like you're saying, number of notifications. If we assume a a number of seven hundred and fifty units. Then I expect you not to go over that seven hundred and fifty units. I also expect that when you come and present me a plan, it better be well vetted. It did come and see us in front of city council because I, that's what drives me crazy is things change. And we didn't know it changed and then it creates more phone calls, and you might think it's minor, but it might not have been minor for the people we represent. So I I I I don't necessarily support the increase of ten percent. Um, and I don't, I'm not sure I understand the difference of your second question of the site plan versus the concept. Conceptual, I I get that some maybe might change there, but maybe you can explain a little bit more of what would change. That you feel substantial or or or, I don't know what the words you used, but it's not substantial. That is done administratively and not through council.
Yeah, I think it would mean, you know, if they if they proposed, uh. Two buildings, let's say in a mixed use zone district, one is residential, one is, um, commercial. And said, you know, we're gonna have, uh, five hundred residential units and a X number of square feet of commercial as part of this project. But then if they came up with a site plan and said, you know, maybe we're only gonna do a thousand feet of commercial. And we think we should, uh, you know, have six hundred or seven hundred residential units. Obviously, we're gonna look at that and say that is not what was approved. And so that, any change of that magnitude would have to go back to council to review. Um, again, as part of the, uh, another conditional use approval. But if they tweak it and say, you know, we're gonna have ten thousand square feet of commercial space. But when it comes down to really designing it, they end up with ninety five hundred square feet. And the residential, you know, maybe goes up or down a few units. That we would look at as saying that's an insubstantial change and we would move forward with that particular project.
But that could be an apartment complex, like let's look at the Kmart property. Ten percent could completely change exactly the small threshold in which we all agreed and approved. In the options that were provided, right? Cause there were two options that could have happened. I think it's something like that, how, I I'm not comfortable with you having. That subjectiveness with those situations, and that particular one, because I think we were on the cusp of it. You know, some people thought there should have been more commercial, some people thought there should have been maybe less residential or more residential, but. How would you see that one playing out?
I would say there we would definitely look in and see what the discussion was around a particular project. And, you know, if we feel that, hey, there was a whole discussion about we need this much commercial space. And that's a key component of what was approved, and they were to come in with something less than that. We would definitely flag that and bring it back to you in some form. Either informally to say, hey, here's what we've got, uh, the, and are you concerned enough about it that we need to bring it back to you? Or we may just say right out, this is just not what council intended with the approval. And we think it needs to go back through a conditional use review.
Listen to what others have to say.
Mormon, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just, I wanna echo the concerns raised by, uh, Mr. Pfeiffer. And just to add to that, you know, in that example that that he shared about seventy five more units, for example, in an apartment or. Complex like that, um. How would the parking then be accounted for? Cause I I would assume that the parking has already been planned out. And now they're increasing the number of units in the in the building. Um, I I don't wanna end up with a situation where we've got overflow parking on neighborhood streets. Because the parking wasn't accounted for in the in the building as originally planned.
Yeah, if it, we're gonna look at at the site plan level, the number of units that are proposed. So if they increase the number of units, then they would have to increase the amount of parking, uh, commiserate with that number of units. So, um, then we would, we would be able to review that and say yes or no. It doesn't comply with the the overall original approval in in terms of the concept plan. What we have been seeing though, doesn't really affect the footprint of the building. What we've seen is people coming in and saying, you know, we have planned for this to have, um, you know, twenty five. Uh, two bedroom units, and now we wanna do thirty studio units. That actually, if that was the instance, that would actually reduce the amount of parking that's required, even though the number of units is going up. Because the parking required for two bedroom units is greater than the parking that's required for studio units. So a lot of those things would happen really without anybody seeing the difference, um, on a site. However, if it did become, you know, hey, we had thirty studios and we wanna, you know, convert those to thirty two bedrooms. Then there is a parking situation that we'd have to review. It would have to meet the code. And then when we would look at the site plan, uh, that would result from that, we would then say, does this substantially comply with what? Did, were they able to make it work and substantially comply with the council's approval? Or is this a change that's significant enough to come back to council?
Well, Mr. Mormon, thank you for channeling Mr. Marriott when it comes to concerns about overflow parking. Mr. Marriott, you're next.
Thank you. I just have a quick question for Rachel Morris, and the question is, is there a legal definition to substantially similar? And do we know what that definition might be?
There's in, there's definitions we could pull from in a number of different contexts. It just depends on, since this, the interpretation that we're looking at here is an interpretation of our own code. We can craft a definition that you're comfortable with, um, but I'm sure we have definitions under the code right now. Um, that they are referring to when determining whether or not something is. And I think Ryan can correct me, Ryan and Rob can correct me if I'm wrong, but the terminology that they use at the, um, team level is. Minor, whether it's a minor modification or a major modification. So whether it's a substantial departure from what was originally, um, the decision of council originally made. But again, this, since this is our code, we could go through and and hold definitions from there as to, um. What was substantially similar.
Is is that something that would be defined within our code? The phrase substantially similar, since it's, you know, it's used here as a as a decision point. You know, is this substantially similar? I would think as a developer, I would be saying. What does that, what does that mean? You know, is that just? I mean, I mean, it's, I know it when I see it, or, you know, one person substantially similar might be. One person's giant change, you know, I I I, would we actually try to define it then within our code so that everybody knew what it was? Or how we, how would we do that?
So I think Ryan's unmuted, so I think he's got some, um, input on this one, so I'll hand it off to him to. See if if he has some, uh, some input on this one.
So, um, it is not codified, uh, the term substantially similar. However, I will tell you that it appears other places in the code. So particularly when we're looking at the implementation of things like PUDs or PDPs and those types of things. Excuse me. And you get certain levels of elevations for, um, homes. And you get five different character styles or whatever. Um, and we're not necessarily saying that, um, you have to build exactly what the elevation is. But it needs to be substantially similar. So to ta- to kind of take an extreme example. If somebody came in and got a PDP approved and it was all traditional housing with front loaded garages and pitched roofs. And front porches and those types of things, then you have a general idea of what that's gonna look like. And then they come in for FDP and they have flat roofs with rooftop garages, rear alley loaded, um. Garages and those types of things. That is something that is, you know, clear to us, um, that is not substantially similar. Now, that's an extreme example because you can tell the difference between that. But we certainly get into a lot more nuanced conversations when PDPs come in and they start bringing in our elevations. Um, I could tell you that our planners take great pride in wanting good products, uh, to be built. And so when we see things that don't have four sided architecture, when they limit this, the architecture on certain sides, cause it's. Facing an alley or, or whatever, but that's not what they sold us as a bill of goods. Then we will push back on them and we will use that term substantially similar as a way of kind of pushing back. Because we're always going to try to get the best possible product and that's where we pulled that term from. In the same sense is, cause we're comfortable and used to using it. So. In, in a sense like uh, this case, if you had a, an uh, uh, Rob's right, like we would really look at the footprint of the building. And if you're changing what's going on in the building, like where the elevator shaft is and that changed units up or down or whatever. We're not gonna get too concerned about that if the elevation and the exterior of the building is the same. But if you came in and you said you're gonna have a hundred units, but it's four buildings of twenty five each. And that has a certain architectural look and feel and open space and ratios and all that other stuff. And they say. No, we want the economy to scale. We're now gonna put those hundred units into one building. That's not substantially similar. Um, and so those are the types of big changes um, that we would look at. If the, if the footprint stays the same, if the architecture stays the same. That's what substantially similar is. If they start making more buildings or less buildings. Um, if they create more open space or less open space, those types of things, that's when we're gonna start getting into the pushback of. Listen, this is not similar to, to what you um, um, went to council with.
And if I can just add a little bit on to what Ryan mentioned, this is very similar to the way we treat PUDs today and have treated PUDs in the past. And I would hope, my fingers crossed, that you think staff has done a good, I, good job going between the preliminary development plans and the final development plans. As we've moved those PUDs forward. And we have, again, very similar language, I think. In the FDP, it says, uh, it has to match the uh, PDP. Except to uh, any variations the director determines are insignificant. And that's the language that's been in that section of the code for many, many years. Uh, so we would treat this e- exactly the same. And um, as I'm sure you were aware, as we did have a lot more PUDs in the past, we would bring PDP amendments to council when. Things were modified or changed or we didn't feel comfortable were, were similar or that were significant. So. Um, we would treat this uh, the same way.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Simpson.
Thank you. Um, I actually want to echo uh, some of my colleagues' concerns, particularly about the number of units going up. Um, because as Mr. No, Mormon noted, you know, that could impact parking and that would be accounted for, but where my concern comes in is in the traffic study. We have car traffic volume counts uh, accounted for with all of these projects and whatnot. And I, I'm guessing that if we were to increase the number of units, um, say not necessarily going from a um, two bedroom down to a studio, but. What if the two bedroom is just made smaller by square footage and they pack more two bedrooms in there? Um, they can do that. Bedrooms could be made quite small these days. And so that's my primary concern is um, we have certain parts of town where we do have a lot of large multifamily unit complexes. Mainly um, south of that on the Wadsworth corridor, as well as uh, in Mr. Marriott's district on the Kipling corner. It's likely we'll have more of these I seventy uh, corridor uh, developments coming along. And what happens when, you know, we have five, six or potentially seven large multifamily units um. Development and we've accounted for a certain amount of traffic, but if each one goes over by nine, ten percent and puts more units in there. Suddenly we're getting to a substantial increase in units that we didn't necessarily account for in our early data collection. So ju- just my own hesitation about adding you, the ability to go up. I, I, I understand that we don't wanna make a developer do significant uh, revisions and interrupt the process of a development for small changes. I certainly um, like even two to three percent, I'd probably be a lot more comfortable with, but ten percent could be fairly significant. When we start looking at these large multifamily complexes.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you. So um, not to beat a dead horse here, but. What it boils down to, at least in the conversation for me is, it's about trust. Um, and do we trust our professional staff to make um, a judgment call? With regard to substantially different. And when that judgment call is made. Um, will they be able to um. Then communicate back to the developer that either A, those were accepted or B, they need to return to the beginning of the process. Um, and at, at what point then does that become uncomfortable for our team to, to have that conversation and say, look, you've been through this process? It's been approved in this format, but based on what you're saying now, you've gotta go back now through the entire process and start over. I mean, is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Or, or somewhat part of the process, but we do like to use that as a, as a hammer, so to speak, to make sure that we do get plans that comply. With what council's desire was. Um, so we, we, we frankly would use that. Fairly often, I would think if people are pushing the boundaries of what we thought were insignificant changes. Uh, we would definitely use that and say, hey, you either bring it into compliance or you're gonna be back at council and having to go through a public hearing process again with the whole. Uh, with all the input from the public and council and planning commission. Um, that is definitely a good, a good tool to have in our, our tool belt.
Sure. So then, so with that, let's pretend using one of the examples of. Studios to two bedrooms or whatever, and let's just say it did change. Um, and I know, and I apologize if council member Simpson already asked this question, so if she did, you can just say, go back and listen to the tape, David, but um. The, if, if, if in fact that were the case, and again, this is all hypothetical. Um, would we require the developer then to go do another traffic study? Um, outside of the one that they'd already submitted based on those kinds of changes?
We certainly could. The code does give us that discretion if we think it's, it's necessary.
Okay, have we ever asked, have we ever asked up to this point for a revision of studies, whatever it may be, whether it be traffic or environmental?
Yes, um, we have definitely in the past with PUDs, especially when there was a time lapse between, you know, kind of initial approval and final approval. We definitely have required that, cause we understand conditions. Yeah, conditions change on a site and they also change in the vicinity as, as council member Simpson mentioned. And so we're cognizant of that and, and we have done that and, and, and would look to do that in the future if it was necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Pfeiffer.
So um. Uh, you know, when I was thinking about the more traffic comments, you gotta think about, you know, we did in, in, in our. You know, land development codes and so forth, we've created a lot more density, especially in the uh, Wadsworth corridor. You know, where, what, what they, I forgot the numbers, R eighty five and. Can't remember, but they're pretty, pretty hefty units per acre. Um, so you know, ten percent variance, I think does impact traffic, especially in dense areas and I get a little worried about that. Um, so I just wanna highlight that, yes, you, you know, this conversation maybe is not as important today. But tomorrow with the current land development redevelopment, it will be a huge impact in the neighborhoods. Um, so just keep aware of that. Uh. Probably one of the biggest reasons why I wouldn't support anything more than ten percent of what, or anything north of, of what we approved during a hearing. Um, substantially similar for years that, I think you said that, Rob. You know, I think that terminology might have worked in the old LDC, but the new LDC is a lot different and there seems to be more. You know, administrative approvals and reviews and flexibility. Uh, and, and I think that's where I have hesitation with that, that terminology and I appreciate Mr. Marriott asking for the definition. But to me, it's still subjective and it's still loose and it's not that I don't trust you, Rob, or Ryan, or any of the team. It's the fact that we're elected to represent our communities and we have to be thoughtful stewards of, of that and make sure that we have a voice at the table. Um, as well. So, you know, think about sustainability beyond us, all of us on this call right now. When we're all gone and this is a memorialized institutionalized type of document. Now what? How are these defined? You know, how are these, how are you stewarding or shepherding these uh, substantially similar for years on, on a new LDC that is. I think we still have hesitation on. I mean, um, um, we've had a lot of conversation around El, the new LDC that, than we've had probably prior. Um. You know. The wor, the worry I have with some of the substantial s- similar kinda statements is, and, and talking about going back through. It kinda bothers me a little bit because the, the developer has now an opportunity to say, well, you have allowances. I told the council this, but hey, you got some flexibility. And I know what you're saying, but what, uh, again, assuming none of us are around. Substantial similar could be of the, be, uh, you know, decision of the eye of the beholder. And, and th- they're making a decision that you allow, there's allowance to be, you know, given for change. And, and yes, we're all saying it here, but I, I again, think there should be objectiveness around it. It should be as close to what we've approved, i- never north of what we approved. And we need to be very clear about that. That's when I think we get ourselves in trouble is that ten percent in high density areas or big sprawl areas. Is substantial in my eyes. Now, in, in a small three hundred, is thirty units big? Possibly. Especially if they're going from one to two or studio goes to one bedrooms. So I, I, I think that there's still some more work here. I, I don't know what the right answer is, but I, I would appreciate a little bit more work on these two bullets. Uh, that would make me feel a little bit more comfortable.
I don't see other hands. Couple of comments for me. First of all, could we have as a condition for approval? On individual projects that there will be no increase in number of units? So that.
Yes.
Would help address, we, that could help address, you know, making a statement as a council. When these projects come before us that, you know, Mr. Developer, Mrs. Developer, don't even try to. To uh, seek any additional numbers because we've determined that you've hit the max and we're not gonna consider any additional period. Um, and then I would like to see if we could develop a definition. Uh, Ms. Morris will appreciate this. It's sort of like the definition of pornography. We, I, I can't define it, but I know it when I see it. Uh, so you've got your work cut out for you to try to come up with an appropriate definition, but I think you can probably do so. Particularly cause we got in other places where we use it, we oughta define it so that we, we make it as objective as possible.
The oth, the other thing I wanna mention, just for your consideration is, we're, staff is fine with narrowing the parameters of the ten percent. So, I mean, even like if you wanted to put, you know, zero percent north and five percent south or split it up. So thi- this is, this is our, our recommendation, this is us looking at it. We started with what is appropriate for a minor modification and, and reined it in from there. So a minor modification, you could deviate from a development standard of up to twenty percent. We felt twenty percent was too large, so that's why we kind of brought it in a little bit. But if you guys wanna bring it in more, you're, we're, we're certainly open to that and have no issue. This is something we want you to feel comfortable with. So. We can define substantially similar, that's, I don't know, I'm gonna say easy, but it's some Rachel's doing, so it's easier for me. Um, and I'm just kidding, Rachel. And, and we can bring in those numbers uh, to something that uh, council feels more comfortable with and, and we're okay with that too.
Ms. Simpson.
Trying to get off mute there, thank you. Yes, uh, I would probably be comfortable with that approach narrowing. And one other thought I, I had here that occurred to me while Ryan was discussing, going back to um, Rob's initial point about. You know, two bedroom units to studios or potentially studios to two bedroom units. I, I have some concern as well about dramatically changing the type of housing that could be within a unit. For instance, if we're pitched two bedroom units, that, that tends to attract a certain kind of like young couple or young family, et cetera. Studios often attract a um, like a, a younger single individual, et cetera. So I, I, I also have some pause about um, not looking at the type of housing contained within. Because we still want to make sure everything fits within the existing community for which it's pitched to. And obviously that can also affect prices. So we might look at studios to be able to create more workforce housing. But two bedroom units go for a lot more. And so then it. Changes what may be substantially similar to the council's vision. So just something to consider as well as we go to look at those parameters and trying to keep the mix inside and not just the square uh, footage the same.
That, that sounds great. I, I also did wanna point out if I can that. You do have a lot of discretion when you do a conditional use approval as well. So if there, if there's a particular project that you, if there's a certain feature of that project that you think is extremely important. You can make sure that is a condition of approval as well. You do have that type of discretion in the code.
Excellent point, Rob.
I think we may wanna spell that out. I'm, I'm hearing Mr. Pfeiffer in agreeing that, you know. Some of us are getting long in tooth here, looking at myself. And you know, we're, we're not gonna have that institutional memory on some of this. So to the extent that we can spell out. That council has the discretion as for, you know, on conditions for approval to um. Compel the applicant to um, not have any higher number of units or uh, to Ms. Simpson's good point that. Um, that the uh, mix of units is going to be as presented it for the conditional use and that. That's why council approved the conditional use is because we were sold. A sales pitch of this is what we're gonna do and frankly, we wanna hold the developer doing what they said they were gonna do. Okay, does that give you enough direction?
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll see what we can craft and get back to you with that.
Okay, great. Next one.
The next one, uh, of course will be the easiest one we talked about this evening. Um, so uh, you know, as you know, with the, the Amazon project, uh, the issue of truck traffic came up. And how do we calculate truck traffic and what is a trip? Um, and so we tried to make some clarifications in the code where we didn't um. Really change any of the definitions except for adding a definition of semi trailer truck trip. Um, that you can see here. Otherwise, the thresholds between light industry and heavy logistics center. Still say the same about there being, you know, fifty truck trips or we've changed that just to clarify that it's semi trailer truck trips. But otherwise that stayed the same, but we hopefully created a definition that helps better identify what that means.
Okay, Mr. Mormon, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I found this definition more confusing actually. Um, cause in, in the beginning of the statement, it says a semi truck trip. So I read that as singular. Is inbound and outbound, but then the second part of the sentence then says that they shall be each counted as trips. So I'm, I'm confused. Could you help me with that?
Uh, so, yeah, so it basically is saying that a, a trip involves an inbound and an outbound. But that we consider that both movements of that trip, of that inbound and outbound be considered a single trip. So the in and out, just eh, for the definition of trips. Is a sing, is that, that movement in and out, that is considered a single trip, even though. We wanted to clarify that that includes inbound and outbound.
Okay, so I, I guess I do have a, a difficulty with that, cause I understand. Like ITE defines that differently and I, and I, and so does the state is under the IT definition. So I'm wondering. Why can't we just use the ITE definitions? And I'm thinking, you know, a, a truck leaves the facility. Goes to another location overnight and then comes back to the facility. I see that as two trips. But under this definition, I read that as one trip and, and I understand that other. Uh, you know, like ITE and the state consider that two separate trips.
We can, we can certainly do that. However, we have in the past for a long period of time considered. We, because we didn't have a definition, but we uh, applied this particular definition as policy to a number of instances. Where we just have to go back and look and see if that actually changed the category, changes the categorization of. Of projects we actually already have out there. Um, but this was really just codifying what our policy has been for, for many years.
Okay, well, I, I would suggest that we change that and go with the standards that are used by the state and others to make sure we're. You know, complying with what everyone else is using.
So not to go back to the first slide that we talked about with regard to fleet vehicles. But why are we singling out semi truck trailers in truck, in these trips? Um, but earlier we talked about those semi trucks were, you know, they weren't necessarily counted in parking, but they were there and they were, you know, there for a purpose. And so they were moving in and out, but these fleet vehicles are also, uh, coming in and out of that property for similar use. And so it seems to me like it should be a truck trip is anything that has a logoed or is in the, you know, in the complete distribution of, you know, whatever the business may be, um, should be included in the, in a truck trip or in, you know, in, in and out of a, of a facility regardless of if it's a semi truck, a delivery van, anything that's, you know, got logoed or owned kind of under those same definitions of by the business.
So one of the things I, I, I would just mention with that is that when we think about those two things, we're really trying to think about two different activities. So the land use is defined in light industrial and heavy logistics and, and those types of things as, uh, categories of impact of how different things, um, are, uh, relate to the intensity of the use. So in heavy industrial, for example, one of the other kind of qualifications that makes it, um, heavy industrial are other externalities such as odor or smoke or, um, other things that need permitting by the EPA or something like that. So something that has kind of a clear regulatory distinction in terms of, of a, a, a higher form of regulation. In light industry, we were trying to look at things like if it's going on in the building, then we don't necessarily care what you're doing, assuming it's legal. We don't necessarily carry what you're doing, but you're doing it all kind of in the building. And then there's a certain amount of semi truck traffic that's coming in and out of it in order to supply that use inside the building. When you're talking about a fleet, it's somewhat of a different scenario because that fleet is coming in and out of that building. That's home base is where that building is. Semi trucks aren't necessarily doing that. That's not their home base. That would be more of a hel- heavy logistics center. This is more for the delivery of goods, um, that are then, uh, perhaps distributed as a light, light distribution is an allowed use in IL. Um, or it's manufacturing or, or something like that. And they're dispersing, um, their goods. If you start getting into the, uh, truck trip limitations on certain things, then, uh, items that have fleets, um, may be hitting that threshold and be putting unintentionally into, um, a different category. An example is in Tower Place. Tower Place is the industrial development that is located at, uh, Fifty Second and Ward, uh, behind where the Office Depot is. Um, Melander White and, and those types of businesses are back there. Um, one business in particular that's back there is Snow White. Snow White is a delivery service for laundry. Um, so they have twenty, twenty-five vehicles, something like that. And they're going in collecting laundry, um, from all over the place, um, collecting it there. And then it goes by semi truck. I believe it goes to Colorado Springs. Actually gets washed in Colorado Springs. The semi truck brings it back, then it gets and sent out. So you would be getting into, is that now heavy logistics because of how you're defining fleet and trips? So really the, the idea of semi truck trips was intended to be limited to kind of an externality activity as it relates to the bringing in of goods, um, to a service separate from, uh, a fleet activity.
And I think that makes sense. The challenge, I think, in, you know, for instance, in the Amazon, uh, case, there was, you know, a lot of consternation around the number of truck trips that were also related to the delivery vehicles. And so, um, do we need to define semi truck trips and delivery vehicle truck trips? As part of this conversation?
So our hope is that we're, we're, we're edging towards that. Um, so we've tried to define semi truck trips. That's with this definition. And if the number's not right or we need to look at that, we can do that. But then the fleet, um, vehicle trips is defined in two ways. Number one, it's governed by the number of parking spaces that are allowed for fleet. So you're going to have a limited number of parking spaces, um, for fleet vehicles. So right there, you're going to be limiting it. Um, however, um, Amazon happened to say that they were going to just do one in, one out every single day. Um, however, the definition of a fleet vehicle and the parking standards for fleet vehicles doesn't necessarily mean that those truck trips are limited to one, or excuse me, those fleet vehicle trips are limited to one trip a day. And therefore that would need to be analyzed by the traffic study to understand, are you attributing more than one vehicle or fleet trip a day to that activity somewhat separate from the, um, semi truck, um, activity? If that makes sense, but they are two different activities because of how they're being used and where they're going and, and the distribution of them.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that at all. I just think that again, some more thoughtful conversation around the two different types of, of, uh, vehicle movement. And, you know, if I think about the criteria for approval, you know, what impacts do, does that vehicle movement have on the surrounding or adjacent areas? Sure. So I'll be quiet and listen to the rest of my colleagues here.
Viper.
So, um, you know, how do we, how, when we talk about like land development and where you have a development in front of us? And they come in with the traffic set and they say, well, this development will only generate five hundred trips a day. Those are single trips, right? In other words, they leave, they go and they come back. Those are counted as two. So somebody leaves their house, goes to work, comes back. It's one. In residential, it is. I'm pretty sure.
That is correct.
Yeah. So why would we differentiate this one different than any development? Why don't we stay consistent with what we ninety-nine percent of the time we do, which is residential, because that's kind of what our data is? Why don't we just keep it consistent with trips being one way out, one way in? That's two trips.
We can absolutely do that. There is no issue with doing that. If you guys want to go in that direction, we're happy to do that.
We just need to have common terminology because we use trips in two different ways. And that right there, I think, causes a lot of frustration from at least the citizens that have talked to me and I'm sure a few others. Um, is it seems in their eyes that we use the word trip. Maybe defined by land use, but it's also, it seems to be willy nilly in a way like, oh, we, we only say fifty trips here, which we mean round trips, which is really a hundred trips. But over on this development, we talk about five hundred trips, which are really five hundred trips. So we just, I just, if we could just go that route, I, I'd rather completely, if it was one way, let's just make it simple. Let's all stay consistent with what trips are regardless of what the vehicle is. That's what my recommendation.
I'm totally fine. We, we are totally fine with going with the one way. The question, not to, to carry this on, is then do you change the number to be consistent with what we had intended to do? And change the number to a hundred trips a day? Or do you change that number? Uh, because that's the other part of the equation.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, but I think some homework would need to be done by the team to go and look at what impacts that would have before we just, you know, laterally make a decision. Because if there's not really many, uh, you know, uh, businesses or industrial businesses that are not hitting that threshold, there's no reason to raise it if it's a problem. I think we need to go back to our homework of like Snow White or any of the others and say, what do we classify? If we applied fifty trips, single trips, how, what businesses are impacted? If any, if there are, then what is the number? Cause I don't know if any of our industrial, light industrial, like in this case, actually ever hit a hundred. And do we, do we need to make it a hundred? Maybe it's ninety, maybe it's eighty. I don't know.
Well, if you're, and just to, just to make sure I'm understanding, I mean, I'm still talking about the definition of a semi truck trip. And that being one direction. I'm not talking about trips related to fleet. I think that's a different conversation.
That, that's fine. And maybe I shouldn't use Snow White as the example.
Okay.
But I, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Anyone who takes an eighteen wheeler to their property, do they hit over fifty? Fifty single trips in and out, once, you know, each way is a, a trip.
Yeah.
So is there any, it, because if there isn't, then no, I wouldn't change the number. But if there is, then yeah, we need to probably adjust our code to match to support the businesses we have today. Uh, in, in the scenarios, but I think there's more homework to, to be around that. I just don't want to say, well, fifty, let's just double it. Uh, you know, I, I think there could be some issues around that and maybe welcoming, uh, that could go with some other businesses. Uh, that we may or may not be interested in. I don't know.
Who would have asked to collect that data?
Yeah, I think that would help us to inform what that, that number should be, um, before we make the decision. And then I just, just so you know, I, I did confirm earlier today with our, um, stop traffic team. It is one direction is one trip, just so we're staying consistent with C dot standards, too.
Okay, Ms. Simpson.
Uh, thank you. Yes, I'd like to echo some of my colleagues' sentiments. Um, I believe we should be in line with the standard what, uh, this is, because this is something that's caused a lot of consternation, um, for the past year now. Um, the definition of a truck trip. So for the sake of sheer simplicity, um, Ryan, you said the team's minded that moving it to one way is a truck trip. Um, I think that eliminates a lot of confusion, particularly because not all routes are very nice and clean round trips. You go to one spot, then you come back. You could have multiple different locations of, uh, stops, uh, particularly, uh, considering, uh, businesses that might have more than one location. So I think it just helps tidy it up and it becomes more normalized, particularly for, um, operations that may be coming to Arvada for the first time and they've worked elsewhere. This is how it's done elsewhere. So just standardizing that is a good idea. Um, and then in terms to Mr., i- in regards to Mr. Pfeifer's point about the homework, I agree. In terms of raising that number, I want to know what's common. Again, if we're going to standardize this, we need to look at what our neighbors are doing. What, what is the truck trip total for Lakewood, Wheatbridge, Golden, Westminster? Um, they may be the same. They may have some differences and perhaps we come in somewhere in the middle there. We got to see what makes sense. Uh, going back to the Amazon project, um, I recall it was going to be forty-two semi truck trips, round trip. That would be eighty-four one way. So that doesn't bring us to a hundred and that would have been one of the largest scale things we had seen in the, um, in Arvada. So I, I'm not necessarily, um, just saying, yep, double it. That makes the most sense. I want to see what's common to our neighboring cities so that we stay standardized with those. And if we happen to have an existing facility that does, um, potentially get itself reclassified, we can always create some kind of grandfathered in for existing facilities so that they don't have their operations disrupted by us trying to, um, standardize things moving forward. So those are just kind of, uh, my initial thoughts. All my, all my questions got asked by the, by my colleagues. So, uh, I apologize. I don't have any questions for the team, just some thoughts.
Mariah.
And so I'll, I'll echo Ms. Simpson with, I, I think we're probably best off by defining a truck trip as one way. And I would agree as well. I'd like to hear from the team about what the number should be.
And I guess my question for Ms. Morris is if we have an existing business that would be reclassified, does this really even apply to them? I mean, because they've already been approved.
They have already been approved. Um, theoretically, if we change the standards for what businesses are supposed to be within a particular zoning district that could create some, at least a, at least a potential problem with code enforcement type complaints. Now, um, we can talk as a group and I'd want some time to sit down and talk with our city team about exactly how we handle that. Uh, because you're right, we have approved it, so it wouldn't seem fair to consider it to be something different than what we've approved it to be or where we've approved it to be located. Uh, so we'll have to look through potential solutions for that.
Yeah, and, and you know, if, even if they're not in violation now, if they increased, uh, trips down the road, could they then, you know, would that trigger, um, having to come back in or something of that? So I think we got to look at that. The ones that, you know, one that comes to mind for me is prescient, you know, because I know that they, you know, and, and I don't know what other major, you know, semi type operations we have. But I think we need to look at some of that so that we don't have any unintended consequences of, of the actions we're taking. I certainly support going to what I believe is a more universal approach of a trip as one way. So. Very good.
Yeah, we can definitely take a look at that. I just wanted to point out one thing that maybe gives a little level of comfort on this subject. And that is the difference between, um, the permitted use of light industry in the IL district and the heavy, uh, heavy logistics center. One is a permitted use, one is a conditional use. So you wouldn't actually be shutting anybody out. You would just have greater discretion depending on what that trip number is. Uh, we also do have a provision, we could talk with Rachel and Emily about this a little more, but we already have a provision in the code that talks about if something becomes a conditional use as a result of the code, that it is essentially not even grandfathered, but it remains legal. And we'll have to see if we could apply that in this situation. But I think there, I think we've got some ability to get you to a level of comfort on this regardless of what the number is we, we pick.
Okay.
And then the very last one is just, um, there was some discussion about the appeal process and how we would approach that. And really we aren't proposing any changes to the appeal process other than allowing for this notification, uh, distance to get greater, whether it's this thousand square feet or whatever other number we come up with. Anytime there would be an appeal, that same group of people, again, regardless of the distance, would get a notification of, of an appeal being filed. Or would have, I'm sorry, would have the ability to appeal a decision.
Yeah, so this is one that, that I definitely want to weigh in on. I think that the salient question here was whether an appeal, what, what, what exactly is an appeal or what are they appealing? Is it, is it city council just reviewing the community development director's decision? Or does the appeal, an appeal take the form of essentially a new hearing on the project? In other words, is it a way for somebody who appeals that community development decis- director's decision? A way to kind of redirect it to council for a council decision versus just an affirmation of the community development director following the, the, uh, the, the rules in the book, you know, where our checkup on their rules in the book. And, uh, you know, for me, I've thought about this one a whole lot over the last six months, um, as we've had one of these and, uh, potentially may have others. And, and I really feel strongly that the, an appeal should take the form of a new hearing in front of city council. Um, to me, I really see, one of the things trying to balance in this land development code is, you know, we went from virtually everything we saw being a PUD requiring planning commission and city council, and we were wrong at some of that. There were times when we were, um, you know, we were approving a Chase Bank in front of a King Supers where they were meeting all the development standards. And, and it seemed like that should be able to be done, uh, administratively. And now we're approving very little. And in fact, a couple of conversations I've had with developers along Ralston Road here recently is they are really enamored, like way too enamored with the administrative decision, like they will do about anything for it to not be a, a city council decision. And I think there needs to be something that's in balance there. Whether it be a combination of what cases go to city council versus become administrative appeals. And in my eye, we're kind of a little too heavy on the administrative side now. Or whether it's a process like this appeals process where somebody who, who does have a problem with a development or with a, a decision by the community development director can trigger kind of a, a, what would have been kind of a traditional hearing in front of their elected representatives. Um, and so for me, you know, the, what's on the slide as far as, you know, a thousand feet of, of, of note, notification or whatever, I don't have any problem with that. I think that's all fine. It's more for me, the question is what's being appealed here or what, what form does an appeal take? Um, and, and I think I differ with the staff's recommendation that an appeal be just a, uh, just a kind of a, a, a relook of did the community development director follow all the, all the, all the words in the code? A, a relook of did the community development director follow all the, all the, all the words in the code?
I, 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 I struggle on this from, from both sides on this because unfortunately, naysayers. You know, anti growers or whatever can immediately jump on the appeal process. To delay and delay can kill, you know, kill projects that might be a perfectly good project that we. You know, ultimately would say, yes, this should be approved. So I, I worry a little bit about. Having it be in a de novo hearing, uh, and, and in fact, we got in trouble last time, as I recall. Because some of us initially thought we were doing a de novo hearing and then had to be educated that it's really. Looking at whether or not the, uh, planning director, um, dotted the I's and crossed the T's. And if there was evidence to support their decision, um, and, and so I tend to go with the more traditional. Appeal approach of, uh, of was there evidence in the record to support the decision made by the, by the director? So what do others think? I always tried to dig because nobody had their hands up yet, so. Yes, Lauren.
Apologies, I'm on my phone and every time I go for mute, it just flashes at me. Um, I, I tend to be in line with, uh, Mr. Marriott's thinking here. It, I understand where you're coming from mayor and I certainly don't want the process to be abused. My, my hope here though is that, you know, appeals are expensive, at least the, the couple that I have been a part of. The, uh, the plaintiffs doing the appeal, they, they put in many, many hours, they put it, they hired lawyers. They got quite financially burdened by it. Um, a- and so I don't think that would be, uh, an undertaking. That any group would do lightly. Um, there, there's so much at stake to prove an appeal and to overturn a decision. Um, I think that in and of itself would be a deterrent to people using them frivolously. That's never to say it wouldn't be abused, anything can be ripe for abuse. But hopefully there, you know, it would be a common sense determine, um, that people just couldn't pursue it unless they were. Deeply passionate and knowing that they were in the right, that, uh, this project was not in line with what the community said. And, and I, I do agree also with Mr. Marriott's sentiments that, you know, I, I, i- if I were a developer, I certainly want to ha-. Wouldn't want to have to take something before the city council because I would be afraid of those naysayers. Um, and so, uh, I, I can see a lot of, uh, developers preferring it not to have to come to us. But this goes to Mister Pfeifer's earlier point that we're the representatives of the community, we're the ones who they speak to, that they trust to be their voice. So if there is a way for something that's truly contentious to be able to come before us, I, I think that would be appropriate.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, this, to me feels like it can entirely different conversation, which takes us back to. Um, really the, the rewrite and the, the changes that we made to allow more administrative type approvals. Um, and you know, and, and, but I agree, I think that there are some approvals that, uh, make a ton of sense to be administratively done. Um, and then there are others that, uh, feel like we still ought to be seen. So, uh, as it relates to the appeals process, um, I, I think that the appeals process as written. I would agree with the mayor that the appeals process as written is for the use of, of, of. In the context of, of that, but I think if we're, if we're talking about, um, approval process. And giving the community direct, community development director administrative authority. Um, or removing some of that authority, I think that's another discussion for maybe another night on, you know, did we go too far? And if we went too far, how would we pull that back and what does that look like? So that's my thoughts.
I, I think that, I, I tend to agree with Mister Jones that I think that's the discussion. You'll recall that over the last few years. I would frequently say when we would have a seven oh vote on a project that, you know, we would sort of classify as a no-brainer. Of, you know, why, why can't these be approved administratively, reduce the cost and, and be able to get things done in a more. Um, uh, in a faster fashion, uh, but there are clearly projects that are controversial. We know from the get-go that they're going to be controversial and so let's just have them come to city council. Uh, because frankly, we know whichever side loses at the administrative level, there's going to probably be an appeal. So I think that does deserve some more discussion. Mister Pfeifer?
Yeah, and then, but let's look at the pendulum that we saw last week with the fence. Right?
Right, that's one that, why the heck did that come to city council?
Yeah, so that one came to city council, but yet, you know, we have some administrative things happening that we don't see that maybe we should be seeing. You know, um, I'll give one example that I asked about, and sorry, Ryan, you put you on the spot. But the, the, the garage, uh, mechanics garage over on Indiana and, and. Eight second, we, that's going to be done or whatever street, highway seventy-two, eighty-six Parkway, whatever you want to call that road. But that's going to be done administratively, but yet it's going to face possibly, well, maybe, I don't know, I don't have the answer, Ryan. But i- it's right next door to residential houses. And so we won't see that. But yet, there could be fifteen, twenty cars stored in front of a mechanic shop in front of this person's, uh, living room window. That was never planned for and they call it mixed use. And so I, I, I think, I think we need. I don't want to say we want to rewrite again, but there needs to be some, it just, it's not making any rhythm or rhyme for me on these. And the current code. So.
I think I'm hearing that we want to have more discussions on, on what, what projects truly. Should be dealt with administratively and which ones need to come before city council. Am I hearing counsel to that? Yes, I'm getting head nods. Which, you know, I, we don't have to start over from scratch, certainly. I mean, we've done a lot of, you guys have done a lot of hard work and, and, um. But we, but there are times where we're sort of scratching our head and, and in prac- and, and doing this in practice. And then, and that's part of the experience is we got to do a few of these and, and learn from it and not just be locked in. Because, you know, well, we don't want to revisit this for another ten years or whatever. So, you know, let's, let's fine tune it and let's do some fine tuning here.
So we're certainly, um, up to the challenge and will move forward and, and have no issue with that whatsoever. Um, I did want to give a little bit of an anecdotal, um, statement, just because it, it, it goes along with some of the things that you're saying. Um, the, the anecdotal, um, statement is that I think that the development community also acknowledges the fact of. The appeal process and not, and not getting to, um, council member Marriott's point of whether it's a de novo. Or if it's a review of the community developments decision, the, the challenge is, is what's going on with that appeal? Is that it's a site plan. And so now you're not appealing, you're, you're appealing the entire process. Which is faster because you're not doing a PDP first or a PUD first and then an FDP, which is kind of two parts. Um, and it costs more, uh, because you're doing the preliminary part here. Um, and then you're doing the FDP part here, which has like the fine details of like all the engineering and, and the utility work. And the traffic studies and all those other things. But now you basically take in the work of an FDP and you put it into a site plan. So that costs a lot more and your guarantee is a little bit less. Because if you think that you're being approved administratively, that's fine, you're willing to put all of your money there. Because as long as you check all the boxes, you can get approved administratively. But if the idea is, is that anybody can appeal, or not anybody, but anybody with standing can appeal, it puts that more at risk. So developers have told, talked to me about it and they have told me they would rather do a PUD. Because they're not spending so much money upfront, they're just doing the preliminary exercise, then go to city council and get their decision. Now, the difference is, is that it goes from a six-month process that we're talking about now. That does not include an appeal to a twelve to eighteen month process if you do it the other way. So the reason why the code swung in the direction it did is because we prioritize timing, which we have increased immensely. Um, but we've done it at the, um, expense, if you will, of, of some of council's discretion. Um, and, and perhaps some additional community input. We have tried to put with the, um, notification of administrative decision and all those things in there. So that there is a lot more community kind of conversation, particularly around administrative things. But we can certainly go back and we can look at that, even knowing that some of the decisions. Uh, some developers would prefer the PUD and we've been trying to get away from that, even though it takes longer. It's a little bit cheaper and it takes away the uncertainty. So if we have that in our, our tool bag more and offering that more. It's a possibility, but then we also have to balance that with knowing that the process is going to take longer. And is council okay with that? So that, that's a statement more than, you, nobody has to answer that.
Yeah, let me, let me ask a quick question on that before I go to Mister Jones. So is it, is the potential there that a developer could have the option of which way to go? Um, and, you know, saying, you know, I'm willing to take more time, it might be a little bit cheaper. Of course, time is money and so they have to balance all that out, but they make a business decision of, I'd rather go the PUD route. Versus the administrative with the, with the potential of an appeal.
Yeah, and, and even in, in high co- in highly controversial ones, we've been even, I wouldn't say steering them. But we've been certainly upfront about the possibility of doing a PUD. Um, because, uh, they would, i- in being forthright about the fact that it takes longer. But they don't have to spend as much money to get to a decision from council.
Yep.
So I do, this is more, more just a comment and I'll be the first to admit, I don't understand the timeline for a PUD. And what all of the steps are that have to take place to get from, you know, original idea to approval in eighteen months. Um, so I would just ask the, the, the city team to look at that and say, you know, if we were to, to go, you know. Or encourage more people to go down this PUD route as an option. Um, how do we improve our process so that it's not eighteen months? It's nine months. You know, can that, can that really be cut in half? I don't know. So it would just be more of a, of, of a challenge to the team to, to look at the development timeline. And all of the things that have to happen. And I get that that probably means increasing, um, headcount, uh, to, you know, to take care of all that. So I, I understand there are pros and cons to speed. Um, but how, how can we speed up the process without, um, impacting, um, in my world, SGNA expense? Um, you know, adversely. So it's just more of a comment, no, no need for a response on that.
Marriott.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make an additional comment, um, and kind of an observation. And, and I think the Kipling Town Homes process is the one that really comes to mind when I think about it. You know, the, the, the original development proposed there was, you know, the, not well received by the community. And the community development director, I think, did an excellent job working with an excellent developer to kind of come up with. Something that, uh, I, I, I believe will be better accepted by the community and, and difficult negotiations and all that to do that. But really that, that my observation is there that the community development director was in the wrong position there, not the decision that he made, but just. That, that, that's kind of our job is to, to, um, look at PUDs, you know, the whole premise of a PUD is, is that. You're asking for something and as a developer, you're going to deliver a better project because of this PUD process. And, um, you know, in this particular case, the community development director was in that spot doing that, which I don't think is really. The spot that they want to be in, um, that there's got to be some way for. Things like that to end up where they really should end up, which is in front of the citizens' representatives, not in front of, uh, a, a team member. Um, and so, you know, if we just think back at that one, I think that one proves, or proves, it just illustrates a little bit of the example that I think I'm talking about. Um, about when we, when we look at this and I, you know, wh- whether that happens through the appeals process or whether the appeals process is part of it. Or it's just a different part of the land development code, a different look at how we approve different things. It doesn't really matter to me, but it, it just. It's, it's an issue as far as I'm concerned.
I don't see any other hands. I think, uh, some of our team will probably go home tonight and scratch their heads and. Know that we've, uh, added to their plate rather than, uh, giving them clear, uh, direction that, yeah, we love everything and, and go forth. And just do what you initially proposed, but it's been a good discussion. Um, you know, I think, as I said, I think this is part of the fine tuning and we're not throwing it, throwing out the, uh, the model we have right now. But we're going to keep improving it. Okay, it's, um, it's seven forty-seven. Does anybody need a break before we move into our second? Uh, Ms. Simpson would like a brief break. Let's take, let's, um, let's reconvene at, um, what, seven fifty-five? Okay.
Uh, I guess first and foremost, I'd like to uh, maybe pull up the slides that we have available. Next slide, please. So we have, uh, we have with us this evening, uh, our new pavement management team and we have a new. Project manager for the seventy-second avenue project. Uh, in quarter two of this year, we had um, some staff changes, uh, the addition of uh, the new assistant city engineer position. Uh, which uh, was uh, was awarded to after a, a, a close contest and I'm, I'd say that tongue in cheek. Uh, Chris Lisberg was promoted to that position and that left his position. Position. So um, that left a project manager position open for the seventy-second avenue uh, project. Um, and then in addition to that, we uh, in the quarter two, we also moved the uh, pavement program, pavement management program, if you will. From the streets department over to engineering. And the thought process um, for the reason of moving that uh. Pavement management program was that uh, our ADA transition plan um. Really uh, came to the city and, and we, we saw the challenges of that and the connection with the pavement program and how we could. Uh, interconnect the uh, the challenges of the two programs together. And we, our leadership team thought that there would be a, a, an engineering component to that. And so it was moved uh. Uh, by decision of leadership to uh, come to engineering for oversight within my team. So tonight, before I introduce the new project manager for seventy-second avenue, I would like to introduce our new pavement management team. Uh, we had some vacancies uh, due to a promotion uh, with the retirement of our streets manager. Uh, and so that left that opening and then we had a re- a resignation of our pavement coordinator as well. So that left a vacant team. We've recently filled that team um, with Sean Lahockey. He comes to us with about twenty years of experience. The sector. He was also uh, involved in the pavement management program for Commerce City for a number of years. So uh, we're very, very pleased to have Sean on board as our new pay. We think he's going to do great things for the program and he's already indicated that he's well in tune with what our needs are. And then secondly, for the pavement program, uh, we also have Christine Biddle. Who was uh, working within the streets department for a couple of years on the administrative side and she uh. She also was well in tune with the way the program, uh, program worked before. I moved to engineering and she also was the owner of a concrete company. So we felt her experience was solid. And she uh, rounded out a very, very good team that we have now. So uh. Uh, I, 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 I wished uh, this team well and I'm looking forward to working with them for all of our pavement management ta- challenges and uh. Uh, virtual world here, so they really can't stand up, but uh, if you could just raise your hand. If you have your cameras on and uh, just sort of introduce yourselves there. Okay, very good. And thank you for joining us this evening. Uh, and now, now secondly, on our seventy-second avenue project, as I mentioned. I was part of that transition back in quarter two as well, which left my. Position open. And so we, we did a search for my replacement. We had a cer- a certain set of uh, characteristics, uh, skill sets that we were looking for. So we interviewed a number of people. Uh, and one of those candidates really stood out uh, to us for my replacement. So um, Britain Thomas is our new project manager on seventy-second avenue. Uh, Britain also comes to us with about twenty years of experience in both the public and private sector. Um, he has been working closely with me over the last four months to make this transition uh, very seamless. Um. He is now fully in charge of our C M G C team. He uh, he has shown me that he has uh, very good decision-making skills. Uh, he uh, he uh, he, he does solid research. Uh, every time I've asked Britain to do something for me, he uh. I ask him for X, he comes back with X and Y and sometimes Z. So he has shown himself very capable, very trustworthy. And with that, I'd like to introduce to you and I'm very pleased uh, to have him on board, Britain Thomas. Just raise your hand, please. All right. So we uh, we wished them all well and uh, welcome to the team. And with that, I'm going to transition this over to Chris Lisberg to give us uh. Ross and phase one updates.
Thank you, Bill. Really appreciate it. Um, I just want to take a quick uh, brief aside to uh, next, next slide, first of all, please. Um, to uh, to really just give a quick update on Rolston Road Phase One, mostly for the benefit of our newest council members. Uh, while Rolston Road Phase One is not technically a bond project, it does, as you noted here on the map with the one. Uh, tie in a Rolston Road Phase Two, in reality, making a lot of the similar improvements that Phase Two slated to do, whether it be streetscaping, wider sidewalks or. Or wider driving lanes. Uh, next slide, please. Rolston Road uh, Phase One was substantially completed in July and we've been working on some punch lists or corrective items since. Uh, during that timeframe. Uh, now typically this phase of a, of a project doesn't take as long as this has, but given some of the supply chain issues. Uh, we had some long lead times on some of the final materials uh, to complete that project. So. With that being said, uh, we feel like the schedule dovetailed quite nicely with Rolston Road Phase Two. And uh, we are well on our way to uh, close out of the project. We anticipate having uh, the books closed on that in the first quarter of next year. Uh, with final reimbursement from C dot and, and final payout of, of some invoices that are still rolling in from the likes of Excel and other parties. Um, with that, unless there are any questions, I'd love to roll into Phase Two as well. Next slide, please, and Trang, you can take it away.
You're, you're muted, Trang. You, you may have been employee of the year, but you're still muted.
Thank you. I have my camera on. I thought I was unmuted. Well, thank you. Um, good evening, everybody. So next slides, please. Uh, first off, we'll start with the status and schedule of Frost and Phase Two. Um, currently we have spent approximately forty-three percent. Of the city's budget of seventeen point eight three million dollars. Um, the graphic below shows the five-year timeline from when we first started on the design and then the riot bike acquisition. And right now we are in the construction phase. Um, the red dot showed that we are on week thirty-three of a two-year. Um, contract with um, Hammond Infrastructure. And then the pink dot uh, also show the end of the construction. Um, as well, the two-year construction to be completed in May of twenty twenty-two, um, excuse me, May of twenty twenty-three. And of which, um, if we maintain that schedule, we will um. Finish approximately nine months ahead of the five-year um, bond deadline. Next, please. In regards to the project facing um, Ashon right now for the traffic control, this is based on Hammond Infrastructure um, proposal. The city did give them the first notice uh, to proceed one um, starting on May the of twenty twenty-one. That would start the two-year contract. And also the city did give them um, a, a notice to proceed one A for them to come into the private property owners' um, properties. To um, start the removal of the curb. Uh, uh, the curb cuts, the, all of the um, sidewalk, curb and gutter. Um, which started the timber construction Eastman for the rental of two years. And so right now we are anticipating them to complete um, the north winding um, between Yukon to Estes. Approximately no later than July of twenty twenty-two. Um, currently we do have uh, utilities construction as well. Um, we do have. New um, water line relocation, um, as well as storm sewer, um, removal and replacement. Sanitary sewer and all of the conduit for the irrigation line and the pedestrian lights. And also last month, we did uh, issue a notice to proceed, uh, notice to proceed to um, for the. Smaller portion of the south winding between Estes to Garrison. And this portion of the project, Hammond is required to complete no later than October twenty twenty-two. Um, in regards to the traffic signal replacement, um, Hammond and their subcontractor have installed most of the caissons. For all of the four um, intersections. And then lastly, for the notice to proceed three. We are anticipating to give them that around um, April of next year, to which include um, the other half of the winding. And so it's just a note, um, all of the notices to proceed, they do overlap just due to constraints of the timber construction Eastman. In which the city agreed to um, brand all of these property for one year only. Next, please. Um, this is um, a little bit more detail on the budget and expenditure. Um, currently right now, this slide hasn't changed from the last update. Um, I do however, want to point out that um, for the miscellaneous in contingency of two million dollars. Approximately two hundred thousand um, includes the ore investment of the three point five million for the um, streetscape uh, element of the project. Um, the city did receive the final and last payment of one point seven five million dollars um, earlier this month. And that's been confirmed with finance. Next, please. Regarding the riotware acquisition, um, this is the current dashboard um, that we have summarizing our status. The project um, is going to impact forty-nine properties of which forty-nine parcels, the city um. Does have possession. We have closed and recorded um, on all of the documents. However, uh, two parcels, um, it's taking a little bit longer for them to close just because of the process. Of each of the bank, um, just due to the um, challenges of some of the, the loans that the property owners have. And then the last piece of um, the parcel, it's the two remaining uh, parcel. But unfortunately, the city did have to fire for condemnation so that we would take um, immediate possession in order. To advertise for construction um, the end of last year. And the two properties, one, it's um, more on the east side um, of the project, the northeast corner. Um, this is a vet clinic at seventy-seven oh nine Roston Road. And we are scheduled for a um, valuation trial um, next year. Um, however, um, this Thursday, um, we are having a mediation uh, meeting between the city and the landowner. To hopefully um, settle uh, this um, to come into a settlement agreement, excuse me. So that we could eventually avoid um, valuation trial. And the mediation uh, meeting is required by the board um, as a part of the riotware acquisition uh, process. And then the last piece, it's um, on the west side of the project, southwest corner of the um. Project limit and this is at ninety-one ten Roston Road. Um, this is the Nevada appliance business and we are scheduled. For a valuation trial um, next year as well. Next, please. Um, they are several um, risks and challenges um, for this project. And I believe for any um, project, the utilities are always on top of the list, both known and unknown. Um, for Roston Road, just due to our um, aging road. Of course, consequently, the, the utilities are all as well. Um, we have had to remove and replace um. Approximately more than fifty to sixty percent of the storm sewer that, that were um, not anticipated to be um, removed. Nor um, budgeted um, in the project. But fortunately for us, we do have um, a healthy contingency of force account of eight hundred thousand dollars. So um, up to now, any of the utilities that we have um. Coming up that obviously uh, were a surprise to us, we have been able to use um, the force account to pay for these additional um, removal and replacement. And then secondly is um, public expectations. Um, unfortunately, some of the. Reactions that we did receive from the resident, uh, whether their business owner or just people driving through the project, they are. Pretty um, unreasonable. Um, I want to think, point out to a saying it's outside, out of mind. Um, a lot of the. Progress that we have had so far, unfortunately, all of them is um, utilities is underground. Um, site-wise, they have started on the project back in um, March. And just due to a lot of the activities um, along the corridor, we sometime have approximately five to seven contractor and subcontractor work on the project. And so for the gas main relocation, site-wide actually work during the night. For several weeks so that they would not be um, in Hammond's way or in each other's way for other contractors. So just keeping in mind. Um, they were obviously respectful of our request so that everybody could uh, get their work done. So again. So again, outside of mine, it's just that if we don't see something, we assume that nothing has been done on the project. Unfortunately, that is the, the part is from the truth because the contractor, all of them are partners at Excel, CenturyLink and Comcast, have been working diligently to push the project forward and to work in a timely manner so that they could meet our schedule. Next, please. These are some of the high-profile activities that's going on along the corridor. So for right now, for the eastern portion of the waterline relocation, Hammond has installed approximately ninety percent of the proposed design. Between Branwood to Allison, we have about ninety-five percent done. And also, this doesn't include some of the fire line and, and services and by the, the lateral connections to the main. And then for the Allison portion of the waterline relocation, due to just the construction of Ralston Road, the existing AC line is being replaced by a PVC line. So obviously, it's an upgrade to our infrastructure. As I mentioned earlier, we do have Excel, Comcast and CenturyLink relocating the overhead lines to underground. And as of right now, all of the new facilities have been installed. And my understanding is that Comcast right now is doing the cut over. And so once they are off the overhead lines, then Excel Energy could start removing a lot of the power poles, starting mid, mid with next week. And in regards to the utilities for the storm sewer, we have approximately thirty percent completed. And then next, it would be the construction of curb gutter and sidewalk on the north side between Allison to Yukon. Our schedule is that Taub Brothers will be doing the concrete work, starting as early as this Wednesday. And then if weather permits, we are talking about the possibility of paving as well, as long as the temperature doesn't go below forty degrees. And so I believe this is the end of the updates for Ralston Phase Two. Are there any questions?
Don't see any.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass next to, to Bryn to give the updates on Seventy Second Avenue.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and our new council member. Welcome. My name is Burton Thomas. I'm going to be presenting Seventy Second Avenue Bond Project. And just for our new council member, I'll go through a quick overview of the project. You can see it's on the upper portion of the map here. We go from Kipling on the east side to, we usually say Sim Street. It's the most major street there, but we actually go a little bit west of that to Swadley Court. So Kipling Street to Swadley Court, one point two miles long, our budget is sixty-four and a half million. And we've separated into three construction packages. Construction package number one is mostly utilities. Construction package number two goes from Swadley Court to Oak Street. And then construction package number three goes from Oak Street to Kipling, and that includes the underpass of Union Pacific Railroad. Next slide, please. Here's just a quick agenda of what I'll be talking about tonight. Go over the right-of-way, budget, our schedule, Union Pacific coordination, and then community feedback at the end. Next slide, please. And as far as right-of-way goes, we had seventy-two parcels to acquire. We've acquired seventy-one of them. We did have one of those parcels go to eminent domain. And we've been granted immediate possession, and the evaluation trial will be next year at some point. You can see that we've used most of our budget here. I believe we'll go over by five to ten percent. Next slide, please. Here's a quick overview of our total budget. We've spent about a sixth of the budget so far. And on the bottom of the slide, you can see our schedule at this point. CP one's kind of in that pink color there. We are under construction there. We're expecting to be complete by June of next year. CP two in the brown, we are scheduled to give a notice to proceed in March of next year. And CP three, which is, includes that underpass of the Union Pacific Railroad, we are expecting a notice to proceed in September of next year. Next slide, please. Here's a quick overview of our pre-construction budget. You can see that pre-construction services, that's our contractor. He's used a hundred percent of his pre-construction services at this point. And our design engineer has essentially used a hundred percent of their budget so far due to some of the delays that we've had in the project. This is from Excel, Union Pacific Railroad, and also a little bit from our right-of-way acquisition. We are expecting change orders from both SEMA, our contractor, and Mueller, our design engineer. Next slide, please. And here's our construction budget right now. The only package under construction is CP one. We've used about a third of that budget so far. CP two and CP three will start next year. And then our material procurement package, this is primarily the steel that'll be used in the underpass of the railroad. We are closely watching that. Steel prices have been up and down quite a bit over the last year. And so we may choose to purchase the steel a little bit early in order to get a better price. We can't do that until we get to an approval of our sixty percent bridge package from the railroad. And we're hoping that that comes early next year. And at that point, we can take a look at the steel prices and also hauling prices and, and storage prices and make a decision on whether to sort of cut loose that package or not. Next slide, please. This is our construction schedule for CP one. Again, it's under construction, and we're looking for completion in about June of next year. Next slide, please. CP two, we're looking to start in March of next year. We do have one hundred percent of the right-of-way acquired to start this package, so no, no delays from that. We did receive a hundred percent plans for costing just last Friday. And so our contractor is, will be working diligently over the next month to put some numbers to, to all those quantities in, in the package, and, and we'll be able to see where we are in the budget at that point. Construction will take us through the end of twenty twenty-three on this package. Next slide, please. And this was presented at the, at the last update, but CP two was delayed from October of this year to March of next year due to Excel Energy delays and also a little bit from right-of-way acquisition. We did find that the new schedule lines up paving a little bit better with the spring, summer, fall kind of paving timeframe. There are less delays from paving in the winter. Generally, those batch plants and asphalt plants shut down through the winter. And so you kind of have a delay through there, but this schedule lined up a little bit better, and so we're seeing some efficiency there. So that's good. Next slide, please. CP three, and so this includes the Union Pacific underpass. We are currently at sixty percent bridge plans, and those have been submitted to the railroad just recently, last week. And we're told that we should expect a forty-five day roughly turnaround from them. So they're running a little bit behind what they usually do, but hopefully we'll see some comments back sooner than later. We are targeting a summer of twenty twenty-four completion on this package. And just to give a quick overview of the whole package, there are actually six parts to, to this. We have the PUC application, the construction and maintenance agreement with Union Pacific Railroad. We have the roadway plans, the shoe fly plans, which is the track. We have to divert the track while we build the bridge, and so that's a whole set of plans. Then we have the roadway bypass plans, and then we have the bridge plans. So they all have to come together to a hundred percent next year. We can get to construction hopefully at the end of the summer in September. Next slide, please. And here's our just coordination, coordination with Union Pacific Railroad in gray at the top, we've already completed. And then in purple are the bridge plans, and the green is everything else, shoe fly, bypass, and all the agreements. Right now, we're sitting at sixty percent bridge plans, and they're submitted to Union Pacific right now. We need approval on those to then do a site visit for the shoe fly, that's the track bypass, the track bypass. And so all these things have to happen kind of in line. It's, it's Union Pacific's, just their way they do things. They make you do this before that, that kind of thing. And so you can see that our plans for the temporary bypass and the shoe flyer are only at thirty percent. But then everything comes together at ninety percent, hopefully in April, and then moves on to a hundred percent shortly after that. And then we can get the agreements going and the PUC application, get everything wrapped up in the summer. And then early fall, September, hopefully, we'll be at construction. Next slide, please. And lastly is just the community feedback. And Mr. Marriott, this is going to be a little bit different than, than what you heard last Wednesday. I've gotten a little more information on what this slide shows. This slide actually shows the number of contacts throughout the project with the landowners that we were acquiring right of way from. And so this didn't include any complaints, comments, or questions that's come about since construction started. And I do have those numbers. We've only received between ten and fifteen comments or, and complaints in the last two months. And the vast majority of them are, are because of, there's temporary fence along the back, backyards of many of the homeowners' properties currently. And we had some wind events, and so some of the fence got blown over. And then we have some fabric material that sort of blocks your sight through the fence, and that got blown away as well. So the mass majority of those comments has come from temporary fence problems that the, the contractor has quickly taken care of. And with that, that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions I can answer?
I don't see any, while people are thinking, are we going to, at some point in time, get some graphics or whatever so we can sort of see what the layout for the shoe fly and things of that nature are going to look like?
Yes, we can. Like I said, we're at kind of thirty percent right now, but we can, we can, yeah, I can put something together and share with the group. Absolutely.
Great. Ms. Simpson?
I actually, it's not a question. I wanted to say thank you to you, Britain. That was my question from Wednesday about those contacts and complaints and where were they originating from and what were they for? So knowing that it's about a, a wind event, well, well, those of us who live in the foothills, we understand wind. So, okay, I, I appreciate you bringing that information to us tonight and following up.
Of course.
If I could just jump in with one slightly related item as well that we wanted to, to bring to mention in the spirit of inquiring on graphics and, and, and some more information. We've, we have recently within Public Works established a drone program, and we're regularly flying these corridors. So in an effort to be more transparent and, and also provide a, a different angle to see the progress of projects, we are uploading that information to YouTube. We, we currently have those up on the City of Avada YouTube channel and are, are working on our messaging to get that onto the city website, project pages, and, and other avenues for distribution, whether it be social media and such as well. So I think the project site looks totally different than when you're flying through it at forty miles an hour.
Chris, are you doing that for Ralston Road as well?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Great. Yeah, maybe, Mr. Devon, if you could send us the appropriate link for being able to connect into those so we can view those.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see if we can get those included in one of the weekly memos coming up with the links on there so you can, you can experience the overflight of both of these projects.
That'd be great. Okay, Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, and, and thank you, Mr. Thomas, for that presentation. One question I have is, is about a concern that was raised by a constituent about dumping occurring from the project, you know, after, at night, after hours, during sleeping hours. And so I just wanted to follow up on that, and that has been taken care of. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We did receive that comment, I think it was maybe about two weeks ago or so. And that particular incident, if you will, was our contractor, he had a, another project where he was milling a roadway. And so he had extra material that he could use on our project. And because it was a night operation, that's when he was able to bring it to our site. And so he did that kind of without my knowledge, but he did that, you know, and, and I applaud his effort on, you know, getting free material for us. But it did happen to be, I think, at ten o'clock at night. And I believe it happened maybe two nights in a row or so. And I did respond back to this, to the person that brought up the complaint, and he understood. And I just conveyed to him that that was a one-time thing, just for a night or two, and that it's not going to happen again. And, you know, I talked to our contractor, and he understands that he can't do that again either. So, yeah, I think, you know, that issue's, you know, kind of put to bed at this point.
Very good. Well, well, thank you for taking care of it. I appreciate it.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Mr. Devon, do you need anything further from council tonight?
No, I don't. City Council, Mayor and City Council, other than behalf of our team, since I probably won't see all of you together again until next year, wish you the best for the holiday season and Happy New Year and all that stuff. So, thank you.
Very good. And Mr. Jones will be running the first meeting in January, and he's going to do such a great job. You're going to hope that I don't come back, so.
That's not true.
We'll see you all in the new year. Take good care. Bye now.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
We're adjourned.